Let's call the meeting to order at 6:30, 4:00 PM on Tuesday, December 2nd. And we're hoping we need it. Mr. Merker, are we good? Okay, everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Okay, the pledge of allegiance is there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First on our agenda is introduction of new hires. Do we have any new hires?
Yes, I do.
Oh, we do? Great. No, yeah. Okay. Let's keep going. She was there, she's not out. Public comment, do we have any public comments? I don't see any of that. So we're not, we'll come back to that if anything. Next, I want our agenda is ex officio student report. That you must be able to lie, how do we know?
I talked to Vanessa with the board today. We have like.
Can you hear him on the phone? Oh my God.
I can't hear anybody. It doesn't matter.
We're like in the middle of what we did. It's okay. Yes, we did. Sorry.
Thank you.
Doesn't care. Okay. Sorry, can you hear him if he can hear anything he's saying?
I can't hear anybody. Great. It's just the room, so it's not gonna matter.
So you didn't hear him?
Can they move to the middle?
That it's really just not doing anything. So I can, I can hear him, but it's, it's not.
Wait, we're trying to move to the middle, so is it the middle of all of us?
Say again, please?
You can't.
I'm being serious, I'm not even like joking.
Can we move the mic up?
Put it to the middle of the school?
Sure.
Just to give it a fighting chance.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, so I have nothing to report. I talked to Vanessa over the course of this month. And we have decided there's no nothing to report. But we wanted to take a box for the whole school for their input. So we're sharing the word out to ensure the school is what they like.
You're gonna share out a?
A box.
A box?
To share about many issues.
Okay.
Like a suggestion box?
Yes.
And where will that be placed?
I believe it'll be at the office.
At the office. Okay. And will other, will seven and eighth graders know where it is?
Yes. I don't know if we discussed this, but like the mirror issue that wasn't solved yet or not.
Which issue? Oh, that was solved yet, but.
It wasn't solved yet, so it's also not.
Does everyone know what the mirror issue is?
So for Woodlands, we, they like polished the bathrooms, but like, like last year, but they never installed mirrors. And it's really needed because. Um, had those bleed in the outfit or sometimes girls in the bathroom or guys who need to fix their face, whatever is in the bathroom. So that it's really needed that we can hear, um, are added to bathrooms.
So.
I don't know.
Whenever, whenever I need to check, run me up, I just look at my phone. Oh, you don't have your phone. So, so I got you. Okay.
Well, we can follow up with the facilities, have a conversation about it. I'm sure Ms. Merrill's taking notes over there. But I think.
Yes. And the issue came up before. Did they explain to you why there was no mirrors?
I don't feel like they.
Um, does anyone remember the reason why? Yes, good. Okay, trustee.
I'll defer to trustee Warner since she's chair of the facilities and I can tack on whatever he doesn't need.
They keep the mirrors over the sinks and then students would sit on the sinks in order to get a really close view and then they'd break the sinks. And so that's why, and, and the fix was supposedly to put the mirrors in places where there weren't sinks. But I don't know what happened in the execution.
And I'll tack on a little bit more information. That was one of the reasons named. There is also, um, issues with if there is, for example, a nosebleed, students should be going to the nurse's office rather than the bathroom. Um, there were proposed solutions such as very tiny mirrors, like a circle size, if you need to do something with your contacts or something. But the other reason, the other main reason, there were a couple of other little reasons, but the other main reason why mirrors weren't being put back purposely, um, was because mirrors are a great venue for filming. And although we don't have our phones, it's just maybe, uh, something that should be considered when the decision is made whether or not to put mirrors back because for the reasons you named, people should be going elsewhere. And they don't have their phones, they might have forgotten to put their phones away.
They have ideas for how that could be.
Between damage happening to.
The sinks.
Facilities and distraction and unauthorized behavior occurring in bathrooms.
Unauthorized behavior is what I was gonna add. Also added, another big thing was the.
Mirrors, the, the mirrors were lesser priority than the other reasons.
It was the sinks, it was the filming, and it was a congregating in the bathrooms. Now, I have solutions for all these things in my head, but, but the congregating in bathrooms and the mirrors and the groups meeting up in the bathrooms, they felt like taking them out would help with that as well for some reason. So, just so you know why, um, if it does come up in conversation, at least you guys can, um, problem solve those issues that people have. Does anybody remember any other issues of the mirrors and why are we taking out? No? Okay, let's keep going. Uh, board president report. I am going to, in the essence of time, I want to table my report unless there's anything. I do have a topic under discussion that I am gonna bring up. Um, so I'll table my report for now. Under superintendent of schools report, is there anything you want to share with us?
Not at this time, besides just hoping everybody had a safe and enjoyable holiday weekend. We're welcoming everybody back December 1st, and we have a few more weeks before the December break. And so I just wanna make sure that, um, you know, we finish this, this year strong, whether student, staff, faculty, ourselves included. And that is my report at this time.
Okay. And next we have committee reports. So I'm gonna go down the line with our committees. And if you have a report, great. If you don't, that's okay, let us know, we will table it until next time. First, we have the audit committee. Is there a report from the audit committee?
Yes. I am working on, sorry, I have to write this down, 13. The audit committee will meet this Friday, December 5th at 1:00 PM in the Woodlands Middle High School, I believe, Freelo Center, which is this room we're in right now. We'll be going over the Office of the State Controller, um, audit findings and the corrective action plan being proposed by administration. Uh, the audit specifically was on purchasing. We are also going to go over the corrective action plan for the internal audit or risk assessment for the year ending June 30th, 2025. And we are possibly, possibly, hopefully, going over the corrective action plan for the intensive review, uh, coming out of the risk assessment. So trust your fingers, if not, we'll have to schedule a second meeting for that. No further report on the audit committee.
Is the audit committee a committee that anybody can come to?
The audit committee is a, we will also be going over our charges, by the way. Um, it is a committee that anyone can come to. There are two public members of the committee. However, there are often portions of the audit committee meetings which are closed to the public. Um, I don't think this upcoming meeting has portions that are closed to the public.
Okay, thank you.
No, there will be one. Yeah, discuss it.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, comments, concerns about the audit committee? Hearing no more moving forward to the CEC committee. Trustee Warner?
The community engagement committee met on 11/24/25 at 7:00 PM in the RJ Bailey Cafeteria. Week one, part presentation from Dr. Nadeem Karuki, Director of Global Women and Academic Excellence. He spoke and answered questions on English as a New Language, World Languages, and the International Baccalaureate Program. Two, elected David Warner, Chair of the Committee. Three, discussed organizing GCSD alumni. Four, oh, excuse me, spotlighted Don Weiss, the Lee F. Jackson High, uh, and Highview Art Teacher at Woodlands, uh, for a 30-year alumni. And on social media and the website, the need for a point of contact and a database of member for, for an alumni group. Greenberg Town Clerk Lisa Nero appears to be the center of effort so far to organize. If the alumni wish to gather funds to finance events and make charitable donations, a more formal level of organization is needed. Uh, five, discussed outreach to non-parent community members. Six, noted that the Federal Department of Education has included agreements with other departments to outsource their work, most notably for K-12 federal grants and it's the Department of Labor. Seven, reviewed recent events, notably author Catherine Applegate's virtual meetup with RJ Bailey fourth graders in the auditorium and the Woodlands High School marching band and participation in the New Rochelle Thanksgiving Parade. Eight, reviewed a list of upcoming events. Family coding night is 12/8 at 6:00 PM in the Woodlands Cafeteria. That's Parent University. Number nine, reviewed some facilities-related events, the water main progress, the status of the track, and trustee Mayor's successful efforts to have the temporary beeline bus stop moved away from the exit driveway at RJ Bailey. Ten, discussed whether our December 15th meeting can be a holiday party with community and student participation, similar to last year's superintendent's dessert and mid-year progress support from central, uh, central office staff. The administration has since volunteered for the, for, uh, the January 14th CEC meeting to do a state of the, uh, of the school's address instead. The next meeting of the community engagement committee is December 15th. All are welcome.
Okay. Can you tell me the date of the meeting again? I'm sorry.
December 15th.
I thought we were doing the 17th. So 15th?
The 15th.
Okay.
You're taking the facilities.
I am, sorry. Okay. Education meeting? Is there an update?
Education meeting. We met on Thursday, November 20th. We reviewed many, many, many policies, um, to give admin, um, comments and questions that they could consider during the admin review. The full board will review those policies once admin has completed their review and legal has completed their portion. So don't worry, folks, we always get another chance to chime in. That took up a good portion of the meeting. And then we discussed student assessment tools, specifically the standard spaced report card for K through six, including changes that are being considered. Highlights include, um, the possible inclusion of attendance data broken down by trimester or quarter. Um, consider including a minimum number or type of comments as a procedure, not assumption, not assuming that the field would be completed by instructors. Parents often find this is helpful feedback for their discussions with their student. Um, the grading structure, K through three will be marked as numbers one through four. Grades four through six will be marked as one through four plus a percentage. This is all a work in progress. Um, and they're currently considering ways to embed the International Baccalaureate approaches to learning. Discussion then turned to parent-teacher conferences and how, um, different groups could help parents know what kind of questions to ask during those conferences to make them as productive as possible in supporting their student. Um, we then looked at what's on the horizon for secondary assessments and graduation requirements specifically related to the New York State Portrait of a Graduate. Dr. Njoku explained the four phases and we learned that the current fifth graders will be the first cohort to graduate with a fully implemented, um, Portrait of a Graduate diploma. Um, but different portions are happening now. We're gonna talk about that more, I think, at the April meeting, I noted. Um, the, the gist of it is that education in general and the, and the working of the Portrait of a Graduate, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong here, is that we're moving beyond a recitation of facts and moving everything based on tests to, to, um, how to teach and assess using inquiry and is, I think the phrase in the district is productive discourse. Right? Um, so what we've been doing with International Baccalaureate, we were learning, pretty much set the stage for us to already be ahead in certain aspects if we move towards a Portrait of a Graduate. Other topics were briefly touched on and were noted to be discussed in further detail at future meetings, including the impact of artificial intelligence. The district is currently working on policies regarding that, um, a policy regarding that, I should say. And two aspects are ensuring students learn and can demonstrate that through, demonstrate the learning through actions and not just written assessments and the need to teach discernment when using artificial intelligence, especially regarding sources. We discussed very briefly the need to build stamina and rigor in a culture environment of short attention spans. We touched on financial literacy, which is one of the parts of the Portrait of the Graduate, and we learned that, um, I think by the end of this month, November, um, the administration will be getting the requirements from the regions. And by March, they will be finalized. Okay. Um, and then we briefly discussed how to learn keyboarding or typing versus pencil work versus touchscreen work and how that impacts the brain. But again, it was concerns that were noted, but no full discussion. The next meeting will be Thursday, January 15th at 7:00 PM in the Woodlands Innovation Lab with an instructional focus on English language learners, multi-language learners, including outreach and multi-year budgeting. Any questions, comments, concerns? That was probably over 90 seconds.
I do wanna ask though, um, and I do wanna bring this conversation, I guess, to the board, to the assistant superintendent, the superintendent. Where do our kids, um, get, do they get keyboarding, typewriting instructions?
We don't have a formal keyboarding course in this district. So I think most of it is just applied through the work that they're doing on their one-to-one devices. Keyboarding hasn't been, probably, for quite some time. But I think it is a skill that especially the lower grades with the computer-based testing. Um, you know, hopefully, as they're practicing the computer-based testing throughout the year, they're getting more and more exposure to even how to do math on the computer, those type things. But it's not a formalized course in the district.
Do you, do you, and it may not have an answer now, but do we know if like in New York State, Ed could fit in anywhere to where? Cause I think it would be great if we could have some level of that curriculum in the elementary since it's going to computer-based testing. I mean, I remember being at Bailey, I don't know who else, oh, I guess not here. Um, and having that, you know, you had to do your test, you had to keep your head up and, you know, get up the road. You guys remember that? Okay. So something like that in younger grades? I mean, I don't know. Yes?
There are links on the website, either website or Google classroom, to typing programs. So if students are particularly motivated themselves or if parents want their students to practice, there are free online tools that the district connects them to that they can use, but it's not a formalized course.
Right. So is there somewhere in New York State ever that could fit in to where like you could have? Cause you know, I'm about equity. So, parents who either had this or maybe have jobs that have to involve typing, maybe thinking about this, but it doesn't, everyone doesn't have parents, number one. Number two, um, the kids whose parents don't necessarily think about this or don't push for that in their home, how do we offer that to all children? Cause all children, we ask to take the standardized test. So that's why.
There are different ways that, I've done it in the past, so we do look into that. But again, it's not formalized, it's based on, and most of the buildings, they already informally, they typically do it in terms of preparing the students. And then we know that state tests are in the third grade, so sometimes there's things that are done in second grade, I think a parent could third grade, you know? But it's, again, I agree, it's not formalized and we can, we can certainly look into it.
Look it in somewhere. I mean, we do hear from some elementary parents that, you know, some classes don't have type of homework. Maybe if the homework can be assigned, like a free website, you know, do X amount of time on there, worried about the road that you're on, you know?
Possibly, but I think that, that's why, so this is appreciated, but we'll have to take it and see where it can be applied because there might be places where it fits in. We have to see what is happening and possibly where it's happening, we can actually replicate it in other places. So, because it might be working somewhere where we don't know, so I don't know.
Why are you smiling?
Because when we discuss this more in depth than an education committee meeting, I'll probably push back a little, say I'd also like more manipulative.
Well, yes. I was gonna say. But this is.
I'm too.
It's not like more than others.
It's not. Any. Typing and we're tech, yeah.
Typing is a, is a great skill that everybody should, you know, especially once you get to like the intermediate to middle school grades. But I think a lot of it is at the very lower level, the elementary level, is the fine motor skills and learning to pick up a pen and pencil. Or pencil at least, to, to learn how to write and manipulate that. And so what we can do is, as one of the things that we're doing anyways, is looking at our course progression because we also have to see where our career or financial management course is going to tie into the continuum of the courses. And through that, and looking at some of the CTE offerings or where it can be embedded as a part of a CTE, a course that offers those things. What do you think, Eli?
The, like, in writing class. I have no idea, but like, I feel like it's helpful.
Do you, what, what do you think we're saying about learning to type at a younger age?
I don't think that's necessary.
You don't think it's necessary?
I think that in terms of preparing for the same exam that's computer-based, I think they would need to have those skills to do, to complete the tasks that are necessary for their, for their age. So that's why I think, like, usually sometimes towards the end of second grade, we're seeing students, you know, you know, get used to the computers in certain ways. That's happened. But I am in agreement with the growth and fine motor skills are really important to correct. But again, seeing where this fits in, knowing what's happening and, you know, make, so everything is important and we'll just make sure that we organize so that we communicate that things.
And it's not a either or.
Oh, no, it's, it's not, it's a different, it's a different purpose.
Different purposes.
And for different stages of development.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Secondly, I didn't wanna move on without us talking about AI.
Oh.
An AI policy.
Regretting my full report.
Sorry. It's good, it's a good thing.
Just get that word discussion.
No, not at all, no. So, so the A. So excited. Well, and I'm looking right at someone in the audience who is already starting to work on this. So these are already conversations that we're having. It also came up in the Superintendent Student Advisory Council conversations. And so, um, and actually, when it came up, I invited, um, Ms. Verdena into the conversation with the students. And so I think it's important to get the student feedback. We are having conversations about the policies. We're also looking at other district policies, um, as well as the area one policies. So, um, that is in progress, yes. Uh, do you have any?
What does that include? Like the AI policy?
Right.
We ready, we have some things to begin with in terms of the ID and the AI and, you know, the output, et cetera. But it means how we're going to potentially, uh, what AI is.
That's right.
You know, how we interact with AI at the different levels. So what AI might look like at various grade levels, elementary and higher. So that's all of that. But I think that establishment is very concentrated on is ensuring that all voices are heard. So students will be a part of the conversation.
Do you wanna be a part of that conversation?
It does.
Including Eli in the conversation.
Absolutely.
Okay. We can move on. Sorry. Next?
Finance meeting.
It's finance meeting. Is that also your trustee next?
Yes. Okay, our next meeting is this upcoming Monday, December 8th at 1:00 here in the Woodlands Middle High School Freelo Center. I did not fully complete my minutes, so I'm gonna be winging this based on my notes. At the last meeting, which was held November 14th, we reviewed, uh, various reports to the board that we get. So we were focusing on reports regarding capital projects. So the first set of reports we reviewed looked at the reports we get for the current year, which are basically the appropriations reports we get as part of the treasures report every month and which is on the board agendas. We kind of stepped through the report to understand how to read it and to understand questions that the board might ask. Um, I have various notes on that, but I don't have them written out here. Um, and it's a lot of detail, so when the minutes are completed and approved, you'll be uploaded to the website and everyone can read them for fun. Um, we then looked at reports, um, for capital projects related to multi-year or what I'll call project length reports, which is, um, something that our treasurer, Amy Ashley Moore, is intensely working on right now to make sure, um, that all the data we have is in the reports, um, is in the correct section of the reports because we're gonna use that as not only a report on what's happened, but also as a planning tool. And it is something, that is a portion of a report that also is in our annual external audits or independent audits. So, uh, that should be on the website soon if anyone wants to take a look at that for fun. Um, and then we looked at what we're going to be doing by June, which is looking at the financial planning related to the capital projects. So by June, the target is to have an updated five-year comprehensive annual financial report, which will include the capital projects and will give us kind of a planning document that should be a live, living document that is updated regularly on a planning, not just for capital projects, but for everything. So that's the gist of the meeting. Again, the full minutes will be uploaded once they're approved at the December meeting next Monday.
Okay. And with the finance, uh, budget season approaching, it's all its budget season. Um, there is going to be budget workshops for the public to attend. In the past, we've done round robins, similar to our board meetings, similar to CEC meetings, where we go to actually each school, community.
Would you like me to name those dates right now?
Sure. Do you have them already?
Yes, we do.
Wonderful.
I went off to the state that, um, Ms. Merrill, I met with Ms. Merrill today and as part of our planning. And she says that on the next board agenda, we're going to be improving budget calendar, which will include every day, you'd imagine.
Oh, yay.
We're gonna be a budget. But if you want a heads up on the budget workshop dates, they are as follows. Wednesday, March 11th, combined meeting with the community engagement committee at 7:00 PM at RJ Bailey. There will be a virtual component as well. But if you come to the meeting, you'll probably get a nice little handout. Monday, April 27th, it's 6:30 PM at Woodlands Middle High School, also with a virtual component. And Tuesday, May 12th, at 7:00 PM in the RJ Bailey Library with a virtual component. Conveniently, the RJ Bailey PTA has a meeting that night. I'm not sure if it's in person, but if it is, they can just walk upstairs afterwards.
Maybe we should, you know, let them know so that they have it in person, so everybody is there.
Maybe this week. Um, so that's it.
So there's no meeting at Highview or?
There were three months we were working with. We were trying to put it in buildings that were centrally located or had events happening at the same time. So, um, or that had, like I said, we chose the Innovation Lab here because it has a good, it's an easily accessible virtual screen. No, there's not a meeting at Highview.
Thank you.
I will hit you to your question directly.
What about, um, the meeting at TDYCC or?
We thought the two meetings ever. Bailey would kind of hit the same neighborhood, so that's why they're not at the center. However, we can consider when we're discussing this on Monday, um, whether other workshops get put in there or perhaps there's another committee that needs and wants to have that discussion. Maybe there's a PTA meeting that wants a special guest. There are other options in addition to the finance committee meetings that were those months.
Yeah. Okay. Are you gonna?
But we don't have them tonight.
Do you plan to do other budget workshop?
I'm, I'm actually just thinking because I think part of this is, um, cause while those are schools hosted, kind of, sort of, um, part of it is getting to the community and that's what we're hearing too, in terms of the community and, I mean, um, not that they can't go to the schools, but sometimes you just think it's at the school. And so I would like to see at least one be at a, and a community location, not a school location.
No. We might have to do that with the virtual.
Yeah. Right, it'd be a virtual piece if it's in a, I mean, I, I'm just yelling out TDYCC, the library. I don't know if people have other suggestions. I know sometimes High Point wants their own separate meeting. I don't know, you know?
Try to, um, coordinate that based on the timing and then availability and locale.
Right. Right, yeah. I mean, I'm just throwing out things. Okay. I don't want anyone to feel, you know, like they weren't considered, but then again, we can't consider everyone off the top of our head if they don't communicate back with us. Okay. Facilities committee.
Uh, the facilities committee met on 11/12/25 at 6:30, 7:00 PM in the Woodlands Innovation Lab and via Zoom. We discussed, one, the soccer field enhancements. We looked at pictures of the fields and of course, they're. We looked at pictures of the fields, and of course, they're pretty beat up and they're holding tenses and they've been overused because the other field, the elder field, the football field is also supposed to be a soccer field. So since that's out of commission, they use the field, uh, all the time, and it, it's pretty beat up right now. Uh, the short-term improvement for the soccer field, garbage cans have been provided, uh, new goals have been provided. A portable digital scoreboard is available, we've got to start using it. Uh, depression of the baseball field near the first base will be addressed by adding more clay instead of installing a frame, quote. Uh, long-term improvements for the soccer field, uh, fencing and netting, quote, for a six-foot-high fence with twenty-five, uh, foot-high ball-stopped netting behind the, the goals is sixty to seventy thousand dollars, and just the nets are twenty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, putting artificial turf, uh, on the grass soccer field. In two thousand and twenty-four, we did a write-up and it came out to about one point two million dollars plus contingency. We need an updated quote. Uh, it'll go on the hopper with the other long-term projects, and we'll decide whether to consider that or not, but we, we, we're got, have, we have an, uh, amateur field already, it's just not in use yet. Irrigation is not recommended because overuse will destroy the grass regardless of whether it is irrigated. A permanent scoreboard, uh, two thousand and twenty-four quote is fifty K plus contingency. We did not, uh, need an updated quote on this. Uh, small bleachers that stretch to the length of the field would reduce problems with spectators on the field. Two, debated public access for our new tennis courts. We have a survey surrounding school districts to see what they do and then vote on recommendation. Three, we discussed the phase four construction project options. This is a process that typically requires several months as we come up with potential, uh, uh, projects, estimate cost options, identify funding sources, and then prioritize the options. Understand, we're not going to hit the budget window, so it's very unlikely to, to affect this budget, but, uh, the projects we considered include, uh, priority one and two, building condition survey items, exterior shelves, primarily doors and windows, mansion ventilation, ECP classrooms at LF Jackson, uh, soccer fields, and a second energy performance contract, primarily for solar panels on our new roofs. This may or may not involve, uh, recharging stations for electric buses, that's a whole separate issue, uh, that, uh, we've heard from, uh, from the Assistant Superintendent for Business Honeymoon. Four, review the current status of ongoing projects. The water main connection on the west side is not exactly where we thought it was, but it's nearby. Work continues on the east side while we work out the details of the west side connection. Do we have any, anything new on that?
No, we're still, I think, still at legal.
Okay. The track out by Eller Field is nearly complete, but we must wait for spring to install the synthetic rubber top coat. We have an item on the agenda to extend the lease on the temporary construction fencing while we wait. We're commissioning a plaque to honor Edward Eller, who worked with Pat Pecone to build the original field. Um, the energy performance contract is waiting on a switchgear for the solar panels and the battery energy storage system. There's a community member trying to find examples of a cost-effective method of enclosing the vest in concrete. The bids are out for the Hyview and LF Jackson roofs to be replaced this summer. This is the last element in phase two construction. The plans for the Woodlands Science, well, that's since happened, right? Uh, the plans for the Woodlands Science Lab upgrades have been approved by NYSED. Will go to bed in the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-six. The Woodlands stage will have its lighting, rigging, and sound outlets upgraded between December twenty-seventh and February sixth. The state law requires any new buses or our bus provider purchases to be zero emissions effective July first, two thousand and twenty-seven, and all buses to be zero emissions by two thousand and thirty-five. They can cancel our contract if we're not complying. Electric buses are more expensive than diesel buses, and they require charging stations. This is, there is limited aid available for both. There will be, uh, new implementation standards and rules for extensions beyond the two thousand and twenty-seven deadline, available from New York Station as of twelve thirty-one twenty-five. Shonda Merrill will work on this project. Uh, we're seeking aid for mansion rehabilitation. We're also seeking aid for a science program. We have a contact and are drafting letters to Woldy Dunn. Just five, discuss smaller projects. We're renovating the kitchen at ECP. Installed a new door at the LF Jackson, put a new swing set at Hyview, uh, replaced some blocks at RJ Bailey, are waiting gas pipe, uh, hookups at Woodlands, and trimmed some bushes at the mansion. The next meeting of the Facilities Committee is either December seventeenth or January seventh, depending on whether the Board of, uh, Board Agenda Planning Meeting can be moved. Do you know?
Don't be trying to put us on the spot.
Yes, yes, because I, I get nails out and I keep waiting for responses.
I'm fine with that, I don't get asked these stuff. Really?
Are you willing to move your leadership, uh, to give me the sub-deep or, or not?
Sure.
Yes, okay.
Well, I got one yes, there's three people here.
For you, Westie Warner, certainly.
Chris? Chris?
I think we should get back to you by tomorrow morning, because I don't know that these ladies have looked at the calendar.
Okay, so it's, it's a tentative yes, so.
Come up with new business tonight.
Be prepared. Okay, that's it.
She just wants to make sure it's scheduled.
That's right. It's an agenda planning.
Okay, no questions, so let's keep going, though. Fall?
We, uh, have not met recently, I need to schedule a meeting with you guys, so look for an email from me by tomorrow morning.
Okay. Next, we have Wellness Committee.
Uh, we did not meet in November, uh, but our next meeting is December twelfth at twelve thirty. All are welcome, including students, as well as here during the day. Um, and we are finishing establishing our charges, which will include a lot of what is in the rest of the policy in addition to food services, so including health classes and curriculum and, um, SCL, and physical education, and a lot of other pieces that are all kind of overlapping with wellness mostly.
Okay. Anything else? Is there any, do you know if there's any advertisements to the kids to come, uh, did you know about it, Eli, or?
We have a student member, um, and we, in the past, when we've had events where we've had a table, there have been people who have signed up. I've reached out to those people and not gotten any responses. Um, it wasn't clear whether they were students or parents either, so.
Maybe it was students or parents?
Because it was just a sign up, so it was just like they're.
Okay.
And so we do have any student who attends. Uh, well, one of the things we were talking about is, last year, we also had a presentation by Builders Committee, or Builders Club. So continuing with that, are, are some of the student groups that are, exist?
So maybe, would it be okay if, um, I guess email the principal, or would it be the principal and the assistant principal at middle school let them know? So they can tell students, twelve thirty is lunchtime, right? It's around lunchtime. I'd also, I, I would want to do that anyways, if students want to participate, is it during like a free period, is it during like, not just during their lunch, but during a class, because then that would also let the parents know.
We're also trying to balance the meeting schedules of the admin that participate as well.
Okay.
So it, it is like a, it's a tenuous, tricky time, but it runs from twelve thirty to thirty. So if you can come for parts of it, that's okay too. Um, we've been pretty flexible when needed.
Let's see, along the, um, that one.
Mr. Smith did put a notice in the weekly newsletter for us last year, so perhaps we'll do it again.
Let's see, Val.
And Mr. Stinko, I believe you're part of student government? You could make the announcement, you're there, I could add some, put it in the Google classroom to let at least student government people know, just spread the word.
Okay.
Um, do you want to share that information again so that Mrs. Stinko can write it down?
Uh, it's on, the next meeting is December twelfth, from twelve thirty to two thirty, usually it's here in the free low center.
In the free low center. Cannot make, let the kids know if you put a, they cannot miss class or without parents' permission. Permission.
They can't miss class, period.
Right. Oh, they have to have their parents' permission.
That's true.
Just say, "In this class."
I should just wander in.
Lunchtime is fine.
Lunchtime.
Lunchtime is fine.
But they should still sign in and be checked, so that we know that they arrived.
Right. Not an excuse in this class.
That's right.
Okay.
Or say, or say we're going there and don't.
That would need more wellness to miss class.
I was in wellness, what do you mean? Safety Committee is not here, we're going to take that for now. Sure, you know the next meeting?
I do, and I was, oh, the eighteenth of this month.
The eighteenth of this month? I don't know about a meeting that.
At?
Six thirty?
I will check in a minute, the time I didn't check, just because I was looking for all my contacts this month. Uh, six thirty.
Six thirty.
Oh, six, not six.
I have, I have six thirty.
The district calendar says six thirty.
Well. District calendar says six thirty?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, good. Technology Committee?
Speaking of the district calendar, uh, we met on November seventh. Um, we talked about the acceptable use policy, which we've had a great increase in participation. Um, there were some shutdowns of computers that happened, and then they were able to get rebooted. Uh, we also explored some ideas about what worked, what didn't work, what's changed for next year, troubleshooting in that way. Uh, as Trustee Warner mentioned, on the eighth, there's a kickoff to Computer Science Education Meet with Family Coding Night from six to seven thirty here at Woodlands. This is not the same as STEAM Night. This is specifically for coding for students from Bailey and Woodlands to teach adults and parents coding. So it's been, um, permission slips have been sent out for our students to participate and come in and kind of take the reins and lead their parents through what they're running. Um, this is also starting to kick off the hour of code that continues throughout all of the schools. Uh, we've been looking at additional training needs, uh, for in-house adjustments for websites, the apps, directory updates, calendar updates, stuff like that, um, to develop some processes for all of that to happen, so it's not always falling on just a few people. And we're also looking at different practices around our new digital screens and how to make sure that those get updated in a systematic way that makes sense. And we're also exploring ideas of having a student-run help desk to help with giving some life experiences to students to help mitigate some of our problem issues. For another thing, for students involved in.
Okay, any questions, comments, concerns?
Uh, oh, just our next meeting is the eighteenth, from one to three, usually in the little theater.
Got it, thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns about our committee reports? Next, we'll move on to any liaison reports. Does anyone have a report? How's our liaison? Yes, Trustee Jefferson.
Uh, for RJ Bailey, uh, there was a boiler issue during parent involvement day. Um, but I heard a lot of feedback from parents being very impressed with the speed at which staff moved, the students working together to get outside, um, calming the students when they saw like the fire department show up. And so I think there was just a lot of very good feedback that the adults kept everybody grounded and made everybody feel safe. And when it was safe to go back in the building, made sure kids had like coats up to keep them warm because it was a chilly day. So the parents got to see firsthand kind of our emergency response in action, and so that was unfortunate that it happened, but positive feedback as a result. Um, there's a, uh, they had SEL Day on November twenty-sixth with a whole menu of options. Uh, and so they moved around the building and got to participate in a lot of different things before the Thanksgiving break. Uh, the PTA is having a meeting, as mentioned, on the fourth at six thirty. There's also the kickoff to the book fair on the fourth, and it's the fourth to the tenth. And there's also a parent coffee on the twelfth at nine AM, and usually there is a hybrid option.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns about some of the things happening at RJ Bailey? No, there any other liaison reports?
I have Woodlands. So there is a new systems in place for after-school for, um, primary accountability and supervision, starting actually today. Students staying for extra help will need to get a written pass from that teacher in order to be permitted to board the four thirty late bus.
Oh, I wonder.
Once their extra help session is done.
Hold on, she wants you to say that again.
Yeah, just, sorry. Students staying for extra help will need to get, no, there's more. Will need to get a written pass from the teacher that's providing the extra help in order to be permitted to board the four thirty late bus. Once their extra help session is done, students need to report to the library, a club meeting, sports practice, or gym session that they're having, if they're going to that. Students who would like to use the weight room will need to have a permission form, which is in Mr. Smith's weekly. Um, there's a link for that to be filled out, completed and signed by the parents. There's a vote prayer for Woodlands on Monday, next Monday, so please plan ahead. There's a virtual principals' conversation and coffee on December ninth from six to seven. Is that a person? It's virtual, sorry. For the SAT on March fourteenth, the registration deadline is February twenty-seventh. For the ACT test on February fourteenth, the registration deadline is January ninth. And for the ACT April eleventh test, the registration deadline is March sixth. Photo makeup session for seniors is January eighth, and for the rest of the underclassmen is January ninth. On Wednesday, here's some trips, this was really nice to read. On Wednesday, November nineteenth, students and faculty from Woodlands Middle High School attended a film screening of the two thousand and sixteen documentary Life Animated, which is a story about a young boy with autism who discovers his voice in Disney animated movies. This documentary provided audiences with meaningful insight into the experiences of neurodivergent individuals. And students selected for, to attend included pioneer team members, life skill classes, and both middle and high school members. When they returned to Woodlands, students, staff, and teachers reflected on what they learned from the film and explored connections between the films, characters, and their all. Woodlands Middle High School members of the National Honor Society participated in the annual interfaith luncheon on Wednesday, November nineteenth. This luncheon seeks to build bridges and break down barriers between the diverse backgrounds and religions of Woodlands Middle High School. Maria Regina High School and the LaFell School attended, and it is an event as well as Woodlands. And it's an event that celebrates our differences and embraces our similarities, and we thank Principal Smith and the council and department for coordinating this event. Woodlands Middle High School H. Eligur two language and literature students attended the Great Gaps musical on Broadway on Thursday, November twentieth, after reading the novel. On Thursday, November twentieth, also students of various clubs attended workshops regarding the criminal justice system sponsored by the African-American men of Westchester. Not only did they attend workshops, but also had the honor of spending time with Andrew Stewart's cousins, the Senator for thirty-fifth, thirty-fifth district, as well as the president of the majority leader of the New York State Senate, and is the senator for us. Um, as I, oh, Trustee Warner mentioned, the high school band participated in the New Rochelle Thanksgiving Parade, which was lovely. We had, it was a lovely day. It wasn't cold, it wasn't hot, and it was very festive. The middle school winter concert is tomorrow at seven PM, and the high school winter concert is, well, next Wednesday, the tenth, at seven PM. We have a lot of college acceptances. I'm sure since, um, this was written, there's been more, but so far we include Penn State, SUNY Albany, Baytown, SUNY Buffalo, Pitts University, Temple University, and Montclair University. The scholarship offers have been pouring in. So far, we have approximately two fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand among those that have been offered. And, um, it's been publicized, but Friday, January second, at Westchester County Center, is the Crusader Classic Slam Dunk Showcase. The Woodlands Boys Basketball Team will be playing in Rochelle at seven PM.
Yes, I can ask a question, I'm not sure if you can direct this to, um, I, I feel like Woodlands gets a lot of trips, but it doesn't seem to be for everyone, that there's like pockets of people and it's somewhat randomized, and I'm trying to understand why that is. And how do we make sure that like if a person's pulled, pulled for this trip, they're not also pulled for this trip? So someone else gets that opportunity.
So the grass, the great gasket was content-based. It was because that grade level and that, that, you know, students in that class was reading that text, so that's why that group of students were able to go. Um, the African-American one was put out for students to participate in. Um, that was also a community sponsor, I think, I want to say, probably going to say his name wrong.
Gaiser?
Gaiser. Um, helped to kind of coordinate that with the school. Um, we've gone in the past, we took about forty. Um, we've gone in the past, we took about forty students to that, so that was kind of opened up. That wasn't based on grade level necessarily.
So the students self-selected?
So for the, it was kind of last minute, so I think some students were some. Do you have a, you want me to continue?
No, that's, no, I'm just telling her.
Um, so we, we had to find students to go to, because this was something that we've always gone to, and it almost didn't happen. So we had students that were interested and also students that we had to seek out too. Um, so sometimes it's depending on the subject, the content, um, if it's class-based, or if it's based on an activity that the student might be involved in outside of school or as part of school. I'm trying to sum that up without being too specific.
So like, look, that makes total sense. One, I'm thinking of is middle school. That I think they went to the Holocaust museum, but it was just a random selection of students. And so people who necessarily maybe wanted to participate couldn't because they weren't picked from the random pot. Um, and from what I understand, uh, like trips for like Hamilton, it's only like X number of tickets, so it's somewhat of a, somewhat of a selection process. So I'm just, I'm thinking about like, because they maybe aren't going to like say, hey, I want to go, or parents that might not know about it say, hey, I want my go. How do we make sure that everyone's getting opportunities to participate in these really amazing field trips?
Well, I'd have to find out a little bit more, because sometimes it's a first come, first served, if you only have a certain amount, so I just need to, I'd have to verify some.
I could just have to check on my experience as a, as a parent, that ninety-nine percent of the trips are based on being in a particular class, being in a particular club. Just what you're saying, Dr. Chisholm. The very, very few, like the one you mentioned, it might be because those particular students may have been involved in the government of Bailey, they were recommended. They're new, or it might be because of different things they're involved in now. But that's one of the very rare exceptions. It's usually always class-based or club-based. And just to be clear, since the public is also listening, ninety-nine point nine percent of the trips at the building level are paid for by parents and students, unless they're sponsored by a particular, um, partner that we have, so.
So is it possible?
So there's no field trip, uh, budget for admissions, there's the budget only for transportation.
Right, that's where the conversation was.
No, no, that wasn't where it was coming, it was more of an equity idea.
You're wondering how to wall the kids off. First of all.
Like, if, if certain kids get to go and are, are able to stay after school and are able to participate in certain clubs and other students aren't, maybe because they're seeking extra help or they're taking a different academic class. Are they still giving, getting opportunities to expand their world past this one building into the world by participating in different events?
So the short answer is yes, but, but it is a discussion, because if there's certain teachers, like you said, doing certain trips, is there a possibility to open that up for the whole grade of kids who are taking that topic? I know with the gaps before example, just an example, that is a smaller class section that was reading that book, but in the middle school specifically, there used to be a trip to, uh, to Philadelphia, because they, they do the history of, um, Constitution of the United States and all of that, and I think they used to take a big trip as a, like a great. It wasn't like group-specific or club-specific. I did not know about the Holocaust museum trip, that sounds great. Um, it, so it was not based on a club.
Correct, it was, from my understanding, it was randomized.
I, I don't want to think about.
I would assume that there's some form of criteria based there.
There might be, but that was, that was the way it was set.
Right, so we would have to find out, because usually there's some criteria, it doesn't mean we might not agree with the criteria, but there usually is criteria, because otherwise it'll be a real free-for-all, even amongst the adults. So, um, they're usually, but the, but everything you said is correct. It is important, though, that we consider students, um, at least once a year or once in their experience, at least attend one trip, uh, one day. But in terms of how we manage that, that's something that we would, um.
And I'm gonna say something. Maybe you want to tack on to the, the, um, as far as opening it up or when kids go to multiple trips. Teachers have always expressed concern about the seat time uh, when students have to miss their class because they're going on a trip for another class. So as far as kids just saying, hey, I, I want to go on that trip too, that, it poses other problems at the high school level, because seat time is afforded towards qualifying graduation. So we, so it, it, the whole conversation is, is trickier than what we're putting forth here, since this is again public.
And there has been a shift each year, and with the process, to make sure it's in alignment with standards and with the content. To make sure that there's painful, as, as was read, the briefing that happened to the students following the actual event is important, because we need that conversation to just delve deeper into the themes, et cetera, and a part of what they experience. So there has been a change.
And a trip like the Holocaust, to do a visit like that should accompany a conversation or have a dialogue. What I wanted also to tap on to, what trustee Valen shared, was not just the students missing seat time, but it also requires chaperones. And then the absence of those teachers as a substitute, so to think about what curriculum is being delivered and all those. So, you know, I, I know we've kind of looked at filters across the board and making sure there's stronger and nicer. We're gonna continue to do that as we are looking, um, at building budgets and meeting with principals, um, in the next month or two. And definitely at the element, I'm not gonna let you go through. But I was saying, the elementary schools, there has been a question and concern about the field trips as well. Um, and I guess lack of field trips, lack of diverse field trips, lack of field trips tying into curriculum can be more than just local regard nature, I don't know, bring that up. Uh, because that happens several times throughout the first six years of a kid's, or seven years of a kid's, um, time here. I do think that having seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelve in one building, and we have teaching staff that teaches across middle and high school would probably create some sort of a strain when it comes to staffing if we're going on, on field trips. So hopefully that can be, right, because it's, it's not like you just have staff in the middle school, and they only go at certain times. Their, their staff is shared between the six grades that are here. So there's multiple issues that can arise. Trust me, Valen, I never know when.
This feels like an opportune time to state something that I discovered when I was getting my minutes completed and approved and uploaded. There's been conversations over the years about trips and funding and budget lines, et cetera. And as I alluded to earlier, there's budget, there's been a budget, there's always been a budget for transportation. And over the many years, the majority of my many, many years in the district, um, trips elsewhere, again. You know, trips in general are funded by parents or students or fundraising, if it's not with a partner. Partners including, you know, you have Lengas and the African-American, and the PTA, et cetera. And that's how it is in, in many districts. But, but there was discussion in last year, so I'm looking at my finance committee, we had minutes. I'm gonna say this is all publicly available, minutes from April first, twenty twenty-five, is available in board docs. Conversation at that time, we've discussed over the last few years, creating a budget line specifically for field trips, that was not done. However, we were told last year at this April first, twenty twenty-five meeting, that as part of the budget planning for this current school year, twenty-five, twenty-six, that the budget lines for teaching regular school materials and supply codes were increased for elementary schools, elementary, by approximately ten dollars per student, um, in each building to help address field trip, non-transportation expenses. Those codes, I'm just reading from my minutes, those codes, which are two-one-one-oh-point-four-five-oh, are consumables, inspected principal discretion. Secretary creates purchase order, principal approves, and the business office processes it. That's what we were told as part of this year's budget planning. And I do believe, I checked when I did these minutes to see if those budget codes had increased by that amount. And yes, for the elementaries, it increased for roughly that amount. So for anyone who has been asking, that's the information I have from last year's budget discussions.
FYI. Well, thank goodness we're thorough notes. Uh, if there are any more discussions or questions. I would just like to say for the record, Dr. Njoku and Chisholm, as well, with your, with the principals and your old curriculum, I individually, as a board member, would love to see a middle school trip come back that's tied to the social studies and history curriculum that goes down to Pennsylvania. I can tell you, at Woodlands, I don't know if you also went, but, uh, seventh grade, eighth grade, I think, and it was overnight, it was like Friday to Sunday. And we went to Philadelphia, we went to DC and all of that. I would love for that to, to be a school. I'll just say that. I don't know how you might have students.
I don't think that happened.
You don't think that could happen?
That, that never happened.
Has it never happened with you?
But we have to be giving back to future generations.
It did happen with the class of twenty-twenty-two, and, and then twenty, then something happened.
Twenty-three forward.
And then twenty-three forward, it stopped. I don't know what happened. You have to ask close.
It's always close, you can do that in a day too.
You couldn't do it in a day, or you could do it in a week, and have a full.
It sounds, it is possible.
Well, keep going. I'm being reminded of the time. Wonder, is there any other liaison report? Yes, trustee Valen, this is why.
I'm reminding of the time. Uh, I, um, giving a report for Western School Board Association.
Wait a minute.
Yes.
Are there any more school reports? Right, yes, trustee Alon.
I have the Hyview report. Um, Hyview conducted their fifth fire drill of the year last year and evacuated three hundred people in two minutes and eleven seconds. They were very, yes, they were very pleased with that result, and the students were serious and, um, and dedicated to the process, so. Uh, they will have their first lockdown drill this week, and there will be representatives from the Greenberg Police Department to do an assembly with each grade before the lockdown drill. Uh, December fifth is the Hyview Annual Reading Celebration. And children and staff are welcome to wear pajamas on that day. Bring a comfy, it says, bring a comfy blanket or, um, front. I would imagine that's stuff.
Not a lie for a friend. No, no lie for a friend, yeah, no living.
Report, report cards will be posted to the parent portal on the twelfth of December. And food donations are still being accepted through December twelfth. Currently, they were able to feed eighteen families with, who donated up to date last week. So they're looking to continue that going forward. Um, and I think that's it.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns? No? Any other school-based reports from liaisons? Oh, trustee Warner.
Leif Jackson, December third, PTA budget Zoom meeting. The Rita Film exceeded its target for fundraising by eight thousand dollars. There'll be a presentation on what to do with the money. So if you're a PTA member, go look at your, at the link. Uh, December eleventh, uh, first grade, uh, winter IB sharing assembly, time nine forty-five A.M. Uh, Leif Jackson Cafeteria, uh, please bring your ID. Uh, December twelfth, winter wonderland from six P.M. to eight P.M. It has a craft component and a, I think, running around to bopping balloons to music kind of component. And December fifteenth is the Gingerbread House Project, and I, I need details on that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, are there any other school updates?
One more?
Yes.
What does that say?
So ECP, um, I'm recapping November, had a very busy month with parent involvement. So there was a men's club for dads, that was on a Saturday. There was great participation for parent involvement day, that was on the twentieth. Um, there were festivities that kicked off the Thanksgiving weekend, so the kids were busy crafting turkeys and whatnot. And on Tuesday, December sixteenth, from nine to twelve, will be the hour of code at Hyview ECP. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Are there any reports for liaisons outside of the schools, such as WISBA, NISBA? Other than Westchester, OC, yes, trustee Valen.
So the Western School Board Association has the last advocacy, um, meeting scheduled for Thursday, December eleventh, at seven o'clock P.M. For anyone, now that, uh, facilities meeting has, um, planned to change its date, anyone who would like to attend that meeting would be great, because our legislative meetings begin, I believe, January twenty-ninth and into February. This is the advocacy meeting for what we're going to encourage our, um, governing partners to, do for schools and students. The consensus is pretty much that budgets are tight nationwide, statewide, so they don't anticipate great increases in foundation aid, et cetera. We're focusing more on the mandated items and timelines of other things that have been proposed, such as the electric vehicle charging stations. Um, so if you want to learn more about that, please attend. I'd also like to just point out that on December twelfth, the next day, sorry, I didn't close that. Is the ed law lunch from twelve to one-thirty, covering civil service and transportation. Anyone who wants to sign up for that, please contact our district clerk. Any questions, comments? Are there any other reports? Trust me.
For PTA council, they've been at the Greenberg Farmer's Market every other Saturday. And so that's a really great way for them to connect with district families and alumni. Uh, they've added a virtual meeting on December seventeenth and have invited a few of the central office administrators to present and talk about the work that they do. Uh, December nineteenth, there's a fundraiser for anyone who dines at Panera from four P.M. to eight P.M. With a relevant flyer will be, which will be distributed soon, will earn the council educator grant fund thirty percent of sales.
Okay, any point else? Here we go, we'll move on. Our next item up for the agenda is board discussion. Does anyone have any discussion items they would like to bring up? I do the code of conduct. So we haven't looked at the code of conduct in a while, um, and we did have some edits, some changes, some updates, right? Um, and I talked with Dr. Chisholm more recently about, um, issues and items around suspension. And also talked with Legal about the differences and the different types of suspensions. Um, there's in-school suspensions, there's out-of-school suspensions, there's.
Form a long-term suspension, so you have the short and the long-term suspension.
Short-term suspension, under five days?
Five or under.
Five or under. Long-term suspensions, which is over five days. Can I explain any of this to you guys as kids that, or your students that go here? No? There's also suspensions for transportation, but not transportation to school, but other forms of transportation. Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
So. So sometimes administrator can issue a bus suspension depending on egregious behavior that happens on the bus, but it may not warrant an in-school suspension, I mean, an out-of-school suspension per se. Um, that has been, that has happened before, I don't know specifically here, but as an administrator, I have done that before with a parent that is then responsible for getting the student to school during that time. Uh, I've also done parent coxis in lieu of suspension. Uh, so those were some options that I've offered, so I didn't have to send students home or use an in-school suspension. Usually, um, in-school suspension is if you're moving a student for maybe an instructional period or a portion of the day, or it could be a series of one, two, or three days, something like that. Again, depending on the scenario, the situation that happens. I always prefer if we're gonna move a student from a class or what have you that is in school, because then the work can be brought to that student, they're still getting their breakfast, their lunch, they're still here with us, they still have access to the materials, they're not at home. Um, so those are different times, usually if it's over five days, if it's an out-of-school suspension, it leads to a superintendent's hearing. Those are the things that follow with that. Um, and then if the student happens to be a student identified with a disability, then it also, in addition to a superintendent's hearing, it may lead to a manifestation. And usually that happens if we start to get on up to ten days of suspension for students with disabilities. You have to start looking at a manifestation.
Okay. Um, the other thing I want to ask, I guess, is can we talk about the bus? Is there a difference between the bus that a child may take to from school and a after-school bus, or a?
A school bus, because it's part of their school day and it's a school district transportation.
Okay, so is there possibly be suspended from like a late bus as opposed to not their actual bus going home? Like, there's a four-thirty bus, there's a six o'clock bus, you think, yeah?
So that I'd never, is that a real scenario?
Yeah, I mean, pubs and sports. Bus that takes kids home because their day is extended because of pubs and sports. I'm sorry.
Okay, so I would probably have to see the reasoning behind it. If it's something where the kid is just not staying after school anymore because of their behavior after school, and then they can't access the bus. I think I need more information.
Okay.
Because to me, a bus suspension is a bus suspension, whether you're getting on a regular bus or an after-school activity bus. But is it the behavior that's impacting the after-school activity? And then that means the child just gets on the regular bus? Like, I need more information. I can't just.
Yeah, okay. Yes, Trusty Valen.
Just for clarification, the board meeting of July 23rd, we did open a public hearing on the code of conduct. We are technically still in the public comment portion of the code of conduct revision. We gave you lots and lots and lots of feedback, again, at our September 9th meeting. And mentioning these meetings because if anyone wanted to see the draft version that we're currently looking at, you could look at the board agenda. September 9th is the latest version. But at that September 9th meeting, we gave lots more feedback. We know when the feedback may be incorporated or discarded and when we're gonna see a new draft version.
Yes, so I believe we talked about the fact that we're, we have to create an ad hoc committee. So the feedback has been provided to us, has been shared with the division director of that department that's going to be overseeing the work of the code of conduct. And that's coming out of the Office of People, Personnel, Student Support Services, Education. And so with the committee of an ad hoc, that's gonna take some time. There's a lot of things to integrate into that code of conduct. It also requires, sort of, takes some time to look at processes that are already taking place and giving the feedback that's necessary, not just from the open forum. But again, we need to include administrators, teachers, those type of people. So we're looking at that in the spring. I think we have a date of April.
We have a timeline. I believe we did see.
Or March.
There's a timeline of different sessions to start in.
So as far as the public hearing, because it was reopened because we had to revise it to incorporate some new items regarding the cell phone policy. Do we need to close the public hearing and approve the current version and then reopen it later once?
I would recommend doing that, because there was only two at the cell phone.
Okay.
And then we took those items under recommendation and we had them for the work for the next revision of the code of conduct.
Okay, so.
But before we adopt the next one in the next meeting, that'll be on the list, we should update some specificity. First of all, if it's a draft, it's on the website right now. So the one on the website is from, is the old one.
The current one.
Right, but it's saying 2425, so if people are looking at it.
It's the one that's live. Right.
Because we haven't upgraded the version since then. We have draft one out there.
So the new version that needs approval, we do need some specificity between in- and out-of-school suspension. And what law 3214, did I have that right? What law 3214 does and does not apply to? For example, on page 32, I believe, at the bottom, it talks about in-school suspensions and how law 3214 does not, I guess, apply directly in-school suspensions in that an in-school suspension can be given without all the same requirements that there are for 3214. I see our lawyer taught it, which makes me happy. So, but then earlier, when you look up, they talk about suspensions and procedures around suspension, but it doesn't dictate in versus out of school suspensions. So that can be a little confusing to folks. Maybe we need to specify. Like, this is a huge document. It's 110 pages. And I think there's, I just looked at it, the word suspension is here, let's see. 172 times. So specifying in versus out-of-school suspension throughout the document will definitely take time. Yes. Somebody was talking.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I just, just to speak, I think it would be beneficial for the definitions, but it shows procedures. I would pause because it requires that sort of procedure. That's why we don't want, you know, we don't want to update procedures and it's not necessarily going to be.
So here's, so here's the issue. There are some definitions in there. So like on page 32, there's definition in there. The problem that I'm having is that this is posted on our website and it's a living document that people are following. And when we're not specifying suspensions are not in our, in our out-of-school suspensions in our procedures, yet we reference law 3214.
Is the organization of it?
What it reads is, as per education law 3214, parents must be notified and writing within 24 hours of a suspension that is five days or less.
But it doesn't specify.
It doesn't say for hours or.
Which types of suspension, right? So then a parent or whoever may read that as it is required for an in-school suspension for a parent to be notified first, which is not.
It's not, yes. Okay, so that, that.
Well, here, our parent would think it's, because it says it says what type of suspension.
But what I will say is while it's not required, it is good practice to still let the parent know if that is the sanction that's going to be, you know, imposed upon. And I hate to give the word sanction, but.
And also the difference between notifying and writing versus not notifying and writing. What does that mean? Is it a phone call, notification by law? Does that mean if you're sending an email or a phone call or a text, I don't know, there's tons of communication, versus snail mail, versus snail mail certified to prove that it was received, right? So all of these things come into play when there's challenges. Yes, Trusty Jensen.
And this might be just because I have to remember, for the ad hoc committee, are students included in that? Because I'd also be curious about some of their ideas, about ways that they have seen things work or not work. I've recently seen the idea of reverse suspensions, where parents come in with the students and follow them through their day as opposed to the students being removed from the class. The parent goes with them. I'm curious about how that would play. Because I think it would be very effective. But I would be curious about how students would see how they would want their peers and the adults in their schools to get up with themselves.
Thank you for the answer.
I've seen, I've seen instances in which two students have a beef and one student will be fine as long as he's not in the same room with the other student. But until it's resolved, you can't put them in the same room. And so an in-school suspension, I guess, might be a way of dealing with that.
Well, if it's a physical altercation, I think that's a different level of the code, within the code of conduct as opposed to a hands-on, but I think it also kind of depends. So. Yeah, fight to me is a little bit different. It also depends on the level of injuries, those type things. Usually, if something happens in the school and you have to separate the kids, to me, that's not a formal in-school suspension to keep them isolated at that point in time because, one, you're trying to keep the kids safe. It would probably lead to an out-of-school suspension. But again, you're probably calling parents to try to pick up their students at that point in time. You're just keeping them separated in alternate places.
That's Trusty Valen.
So if we're going to close out the current draft and approve it for the 2526 school year.
With the edit of page 34, which suspension needs to be. Fine, thank you.
Could we, listen, I know we want to go through, New Virginia, we want to go through with a fine-tooth comb, take on more of the readings of feedback you've got from us. But are there simple clarifications that we can do, such as what President Mary's just said in this current version, that don't need a committee to debate?
Yes.
You know, like the chart of penalties or responsibilities and rights. Are there simple things, other than feedback that we can edit?
Yes, something like that is easy to me, is an easy edit. The chart thing was a lot and it was, it required a lot of cross-reference. And right now, we have ad hoc committees for about four things right now.
And I do agree, it is best practice to include as many stakeholders as possible with three vamping something of this magnitude. But just clarifying something.
Absolutely.
Right. So, okay. Because I think some of the things were easy.
I don't, yeah, I don't know why I have a big list right now.
No, we have a big list.
Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns? Now, 7:54. Hearing none. Is there a motion for our executive session?
I move that we adjourn to executive session to discuss information relating to proposed, pending, or current litigation, deployment, history of particular persons, personnel management, employee records, and meditative constitution by state or federal law, including seeking advice and counsel.
Second.
This will probably move in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. The non-executive session is due for 7:53 p.m. Yes. We are back from the executive session, and we're going straight into our work session approvals. First item on the agenda is F1 Personnel Instructional Items. Can I get a motion, please?
I move that we approve the instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
This will probably move in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we have F2 Personnel Non-Instructional Items.
I move that we approve the non-instructional personnel items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
This will probably move in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item F3, Board Action Items.
I move that we approve the board action items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
This will probably move in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Item F4, Pupil Personnel Services Item.
I move that we approve the pupil personnel services items presented to the board for approval this evening.
Second.
This will probably move the second discussion. Trusty Valen, did you have discussion with the making noises?
I am making noises, but everybody's up.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Let's turn trusties to page 15. K1, Review Items for Analysis. And K1, Appointment. K2, Appointment for Extracurricular Activities, Winter Sports. K3, Minutes. K4, Policy Approvals. K... Sorry, I was just reading something. K5, Financial Reserve Plan. K6, Certificate Report. K7, Warrant Report.
I have something on that.
Yes?
The warrant report for October... I don't remember if it's the 25 or the signed page is one. But the, the the spreadsheet that they pasted into the second page has the tax catalog in it and it's hard to read, so.
For what the, so the line goes off the end.
Yeah, it's like it's all squished. It looks like they shrunk it unevenly to fit on a page or something. I'm not sure what they did.
Okay, which, that document was this?
I think sent it.
The warrant. Okay.
Yeah, for the claim audit?
Yeah.
Is that lawyer?
Yeah.
Was this the one that you got?
It's just three documents attached. Is it the warrant report in the middle?
I think it's.
Oh, claims.
Right.
It's the claims on the report.
Okay, thank you. When I'm looking at it, it looks weird on the last page.
It's on the second page.
The second to last page, okay. She'll send it.
The claim order report.
Okay.
Okay. Number, K7, K8 is a contract. K9, there's no K9. We're going to move on to closing items. Are there any new business items that the board has presented for us this evening? Yes, Trusty Valen.
One, just a general reminder to the board in public that I believe our next regular meeting in December is located at Hyview.
It is.
Okay. That's all.
Thank you.
You said one.
Well, because I had said to Trusty Warner that we'd have our answer about the 17th by new business, ladies. I did verify it's not an agenda planning leadership. So.
We can move it to, we can move it. I think we can accommodate.
Okay, thank you.
So what's, what's the?
The date? It's the December date for.
Was it the 15th or the 17th?
I think it's the 17th.
Wednesday, December 17th will now be a Facilities Committee meeting at
Woodlands Innovation Lab.
At 6:30?
All are welcome.
Yes.
PM, Woodlands. So we did reserve the room.
Any other new business items? Hearing none. Can I get a closing adjournment?
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
This will probably move in second. All of the favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. 11:22 p.m. Good night.
Bye.